Join me in the fight of all the case. I am the president of the firing of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Right, in your package you have the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Bell and a second by Jorgensen to approve the consent agenda. I just want to make a quick statement here that at our last meeting on August 20th, when the board voted to terminate the employment of the director, chief medical examiner investigator, I read a statement that indicated this termination was a recommendation of Dr. Elliott, the medical examiner. I want to correct my statement. Dr. Elliott was involved in the process that led to this dismissal. The decision to terminate was the board of supervisors' decision. So with that, all those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, first up, John Rasmussen.
John can let me take it. I've got a copy of the letting materials if you'd like.
We probably got better pricing.
Yeah. Oh, man.
This is to open the bids for bridge materials.
Oh, sure, I see the numbers are better.
Only one bidder?
But we have to open them in front of us. Ready?
Sure. How many bidders are there?
Yep.
Like four.
So the first one we're going to open is Odin, the beam. Bid is...
And then are you going beams, materials, piling?
Yes.
Okay.
Odin's bid for beams is seventy-two thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty cents. Husker Steel beams. Their bid is fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. And those are the only two bids we received for beams. So we will move on to miscellaneous materials.
Next time I'm going to read and Brandon's going to open them.
Odin, Odin Materials or Odin Enterprises, their bid for miscellaneous materials is eighteen thousand, two hundred and five dollars and forty-nine cents.
They're out of, they're local with Odin. I believe they're...
I haven't heard that name before.
Isn't that the old Omaha Steel?
Is it?
I think it hits.
Husker Steel bid for miscellaneous materials is fourteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Where's Husker Steel from?
Oh, boy. They're from Lincoln.
I don't know. Husker Steel's out of Columbus, Nebraska.
Iowa City.
Odin material bid for piling.
Nobody else.
Just two. Sixty-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. And Husker Steel bid for piling is seventy-five thousand, six hundred forty dollars and sixty cents. That's all the bids we received for piling. One last one for deck from Wheeler. Is a hundred and three thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and no cents.
What kind of deck is that?
It is a six-inch nail laminated panel deck. It's made out of wood and they put it together. It's got a lap on each end and they'll attach it to the beams with clips.
Is this, is this on Elm Tree over Silver Creek? Is that what we're using?
Yes.
Why are we using wood instead of putting concrete on it?
Cost.
What's the life, what's the lifespan of the wood?
We were using these decks up in Shelby County and we had some that were in for fifteen years. We put a seal code on top of them and they looked like the day we put them in. They're all treated wood, so I think they estimate the lifespan is fifty years. It's kind of what Wheeler tells you. The concrete deck life is sixty-five years, so you're getting close to the same.
Does that limit the, the weight for the bridge?
No, it'll be legal weight for all trucks.
Ninety thousand pounds.
Yes.
Okay.
HL93 loading.
Where's Wheeler at?
I don't know.
Okay.
Eden Prairie, Minnesota.
Okay, so did you email this bid packet out to these, all these folks that are on here then?
Yes.
And then do we publish on an engineer website or something for bids on?
Yeah.
I thought we might have got a few more bids, but I guess they're...
You're fixing other bridges, probably.
I didn't say construction was slow.
And the work is scheduled for this year or next year?
Not yet scheduled. Well, this is just the materials, so we kind of would assume where they would line up and when they project to have them to us before we line up for construction.
The bids for beams, materials and piling, you got Husker Steel, the cheapest for the two, and then Odin cheap for the last one. Is there a problem with mixing them companies up to do these three?
No.
Items?
No. That's why we split it up to get the best price for each type of material, so.
With just opening the bids today, so you'll bring back?
Yes.
There's no action required at all type of parts?
Are these under the bid threshold that you're allowed now?
So when we bid these, we don't have the bid threshold. That's, that's, we did, if we bought these materials, then we'd have the bid threshold. So that's, that's why we're bidding them now.
What are, is the bid threshold up to?
It's one-twenty, I think it's going to one-fifteen.
That's my thought, okay, thank you.
No action required there, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a public hearing and first consideration of ordinance number 2024-05 and ordinance to add chapter 7.7 restricting certain secondary roads for use by trucks and commercial vehicles and to set the date for the second consideration.
Did we, did we make a motion to open the bids then?
Oh, no, we didn't.
I'll make that motion to open the bids.
I'll second that.
Back here. Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the bids. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, sorry, reading that backwards.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, roll call vote for that, don't we?
Yep.
Melvin?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Jorgensen.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Is there anyone in our public today or on the Teams connection that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the public today or on Teams that would like to speak against this ordinance? So the ordinance?
Do I speak, John?
We need to close the public hearing and then we have our discussion?
So moved, second.
Okay, Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Wickman.
Aye.
Bell. Shay.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
All right, is there anything, when did you want to set the date for the second reading?
I think on the ordinance in your draft, it's second consideration, September 10th.
We're just adding six roads to this restriction to permit or to prohibit commercial traffic, large con...
Correct, so I brought a first draft and since then, we added language in there allows you to add roads by resolution instead of doing the ordinance over again. And I'll kind of step back on commercial trucks that allowed agricultural vehicles hauling farm produce on these roads as well, so maybe those changes were initial conversations.
That keeps your farmer's market status?
Yes, so if they need to go through there with produce during harvest, they still can.
So what trucks you want to restrict, John?
Construction traffic, you know, the trucks going to down south hauling dirt, that sort of stuff.
Rock. But they can still use it if they're working on that. It's not a cut through.
I don't, so you, you want, you want to eliminate dirt trucks from hauling dirt?
On some roads, yeah, on some of the seal code roads.
What other, what other trucks, John?
Already mixed trucks would be another one for some developments. There's, there's alternative routes there. The problem is the, the routes that sometimes they want to use that aren't signed or constructed for that and they're residential, so we're just trying to dissuade that. So that if you look east of town, the city's kind of pushing everybody onto, off of Greenview, so then they start using Longview Loop when, you know, Eastern Hills Drive is there, much better road for that traffic. So there's just kind of situations like that. Berry Hill Road's another, that would cut across on gravel and, you know, there's a highway alternative to that.
So you, what's the weight limit on, on, on a grain truck, John?
Governor will let them go ninety thousand.
What would be the limit on a, on a dirt dump, John?
I think they haul ninety as well, right? Construction.
I thought it was, well, it's eighty on the interstate. Is it ninety on the backroads?
The construction vehicles, I guess. Ninety-six on construction vehicles. They're hauling heavier, that's why they're not on the interstate because they can't haul the interstate.
Scales because there's no scale that...
So if we're building a housing development and we're hauling some dirt out, we can't go on those roads?
Yeah, if there's another alternative there, we wouldn't be shutting that road down, I guess.
Like in the situation you're thinking of, they're on that Berry Hill, when they're hauling dirt from Pioneer Trail and the dirt trucks would run down Pioneer Trail, they would get to a certain spot where they're like, okay, we're backing up. Then they started swinging and they would go down Berry Hill. Well, then both John's office and my office, our phones would light up because all the residents are like, hey, we got dirt trucks are not cutting down through our area versus staying on Pioneer Trail and just kind of waiting their turn to go out on the main road. That road ain't hardly winding up for two of them to be doing that road. Yeah, so turns got, I don't know, three or four real bad turn, what I call bad turns. So we, we stay on the phones most of those days, talking with the site guys to make sure that they're, you know, yelling at their truck drivers as they roll out the lot to not turn down that way, to slow themselves down. John will, John's office, you know, they'll have to go out there and sometimes they erect signs or, you know, check the conditions of what's going on, but it becomes hazardous.
It would be handled on a case-by-case basis, couldn't it?
But this gives a feat to it. This gives the, this ordinance, I think.
Yeah.
Gives us the backup.
We're fine now and we can erect signs up. The problem is we'll go talk to the contractors and they're pretty much done by the time we get it fixed. Then next week we do it all over again.
So there's a prospect that these truckers will get fined? Have a, have a, pay a, pay a fine?
Yes.
Okay. And that the sheriff's offices are...
Right, so it'll be, there must be signs, so then there's only six of them right now we're struggling with, but yes, there will be a fine with it.
And you have the ability to authorize a waiver?
Right, they're, I can read the list of exemptions, you got them in their packet, but I mean, if, if they're farming on there, if they're pouring a slab in their garage, they can still bring a truck in, they just have to come in the quickest route. It's really just about, you know, this big convoy of trucks trying to find a shortcut. It shouldn't stop anybody that lives out there enjoying their property or getting things in and out.
You said if a citizen wanted to pave their garage?
Driveway.
They would need to take a different route?
No, they can still get their trucks in, so everybody could, if you live on the route and you had a truck, you can still drive in that road. It's, it's really just about people taking a shortcut, the whole round of trucks or if they're far off.
It's not a weight issue, right?
Yeah, we're limiting the weight to thirteen tons on those routes.
More of a cut through. John, do these trucks have bills of waiting that they usually carry with them, what they're, whatever they're hauling?
I don't think so, it's mostly construction, gravel or stuffs.
Dirt or gravel than anything.
Well, line killing is rock. Why is that on here?
They're looking to seal coat the road and currently they're, they have a truck restriction on it now. That was a court ordered one, so this...
There was a child killed a number of years back. They fought for the restriction of the rock quarry running the truck around there. And that's what, that's what got it to stay. A child was killed and they spent a lot of money to work on that and he got it through and that's what that's about.
This ordinance has been published in the Parrel Correct and the other papers.
Probably on the 29th of August. It's going to be published again on the 19th of September.
They don't need any motion on this, right?
No, we need a motion to go second here.
Yeah.
Either approve or deny it. Prove it. Second reading.
I made the motion.
You did?
I made the motion, short and...
Bell.
Set for second for September 10th at 10 o'clock.
Matt, is it your recommendation to go forward with this?
Yeah.
Just don't like restricting traffic, telling people they can't drive on our...
I think it's really going to help us out with these developments that are coming in to there. I mean, already on the grading permits, you have to, you designate out the route that you're going to take on there, but we really do get put into some bad situations when they're running three hundred loads a day off of the site and between John's office and our office, trying to control those truck drivers. And I would say luckily, we have been lucky to date with the developers that we've had to work with, that a lot of times they will work with us and help us with the truck traffic that's there, but it's only, it's only a matter of time before we get somebody who won't work with us and they just go. And then we, at the sheriff's office, we're going to have to get involved. We need something to be able to help back them up.
Kristin, you've reviewed it, haven't you?
Yeah.
Good to go?
Aye.
We'll go.
Melvin, call the roll, please.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Wickman.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Shay. Jorgensen.
I already did this once, I don't know.
After this one, okay. I got confused here, Melvin.
All right, thank you very much.
I already had it written down, five eyes, I don't know.
Do they, do they look like they're going to open that Stevens Road out there?
I'm not aware of that.
Are they, are they in contact with you then?
I know they were pouring concrete just a week ago, but I don't know when.
Looks like it's ready to be opened. Will they, will they contact you when it happens? Is that State Orchard Road, is half of that State Orchard Road county and half city, like over there on Greenview?
Right.
Man, wish we could correct those issues.
Read.
Half's road. And then I guess I don't go out there again.
Once they start building houses out there, they'll change it. Which would be good.
They didn't on Greenville.
Yeah, but now this is cement.
This is cementing on Greenville.
Some more house.
Moving on, Matt Wyatt, Director, Planning and Development, discussion and our decision to approve and authorize Board Design Resolution Number 56-2024 entitled Resolution to Add the roadway name of Stone Ridge Court.
So moved.
Second. This on that new development for 12?
Correct, this is on that RMP 87 development that just due to the east. It's just an East of Petri out there. So this will establish the street name for us and address range. But as the property owners come in to start permitting things, we'll start assigning addresses with the street name persistent. That's just a call to sack, right?
Correct.
Additional discussion? I think we call the roll, please.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Wickman.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Bell.
Bell.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Do you come up with the street names?
No.
Uh, owners do.
Correct.
Right, next up, we have a resolu, or a proclamation. Laurel Muting, Prevention Director, Heartland Family Service, Southwest Iowa Drug Endangered Children and Patricia Russman, Director, Thriving Families Alliance and Jessica Payment.
Payment.
Community Impact Coordinator, Thriving Families Alliance, discussion and or decision to approve and sign proclamation designating the month of September 2024 as Substance Use Prevention and Recovery Month.
So moved, second.
All right, we have a motion by Shay and a second by Jorgensen to approve and sign proclamation design the month of September 24th as Substance Use Prevention and Recovery Month. Would someone like to read the proclamation?
Of course.
I can do it.
I can.
I'll read it first.
Before we vote on it?
Yeah.
Hopefully we vote on it. I'll try to remember.
Mental health and substance use disorders affect all communities, but with commitment and support, those impacted can embark on a journey of improved health and overall wellness. This September, we recognize prevention works, treatment is effective and people do recover. One in eight children, eight point seven million in the U.S. live in households with at least one parent who has a substance use disorder. One in three children in the Iowa foster care system have a parent using meth. Of the 142 child in need of assistance cases in Potawatomi County, eighty-seven percent were for drug allegations. Children living in drug environments are at a risk for devastating effects, including severe neglect, physical, emotional and sexual abuse and developmental delays. These children are more likely to grow and develop chronic diseases like diabetes, heart disease and obesity. Additionally, they are also more likely to develop a substance use disorder, financial difficulties and employment challenges. With accessibility and distribution increased along the I-80 slash I-29 corridor, our areas at a unique risk. In 2023, 200,000 grams of meth was seized in Iowa. From 2012 to 2016, the rate of meth-related treatment admissions nearly doubled in Iowa. Potawatomi County reporting some of the highest rates of treatment admissions throughout the state. Additionally, meth overdose mortality rates have increased, 196 deaths in Iowa. Whereas substance use continues to destroy individual families and communities and whereas addictive substances like meth and, can I say meth, and marijuana can be found in every region of the state and whereas addiction shows no boundaries. It can happen to anyone regardless their economic status, education, upbringing or potential. And whereas children grow fast with positive childhood experiences and nurturing environments that are drug-free and whereas addiction places undue burden on our public safety, public health, human services, healthcare, education, employment and treatment systems. And whereas substance use treatment is effective in interrupting the cycle of addiction and abuse. And whereas the support, commitment and involvement of the entire community is needed in order to solve this problem. And whereas recovery provides individuals and families an opportunity to build safe, stable, nurturing relationships and environments. And therefore, we, Potawatomi County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Substance Use Prevention and Recovery Month in Potawatomi County. Substance Use Prevention and Recovery Month spreads the message that prevention works, treatment is effective and people do recover. Safe, stable, nurturing relationships and environments are necessary to the overall health and well-being of all in the family, as well as building a more resilient community. Throughout this month, we encourage people to become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health and substance use disorders and encourage people in need of recovery services to seek help dated September 3rd, 2024.
Thank you, ladies.
Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Bell.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
And Jorgensen.
Aye.
That motion has carried and the weight of the world is on your shoulders. We've got representatives here this morning from Jenny Edmondson Hospital, from the Iowa West Foundation, from the County Attorney's Office, and we, we all know that it's important that we defeat this and spend time, these stats are staggering. We, we need to change, change the course.
We want to do Heartland Family and Thriving Families, do a photo?
Yeah.
I hear you shaking, I see you shaking your feet, I see you shaking your head.
That'd be great.
Maybe if you guys want to stand up, they'll just file.
Oh, yes. Playing on a good down prime.
Stand up here, ladies, right in front of you. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you so much.
It was awesome having you guys.
You were super excited that you're part of our partners and... We need some people.
Purple the color.
Come on, make a couple rows or two so we see you. There you go.
Yes, that is a great show. I'm tired, I'll get the...
I'll find a window. Susan, I have your phone right.
Get your pics out there.
Can you see through the window?
Can you see through the window? One, two, three. All right, excellent. Thank you.
I have a question. They are presenting a proclamation. Shouldn't they be able to read it and jump to the board? Because they they could have their 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 skills to read and their voices and so forth. Whereas we're wearing out our chairman. So is there something that?
Well, let's you read the next one.
No, 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 no.
There you go. There you go, Jeff.
I think they would, I think they would, those present a proclamation, I think I'd have the chance to read it to embellish it.
Sure. We also have some materials for distribution, like we have a recovery month event that's coming up on the fourteenth of September. Can we give you some of those things?
Yes, please.
Any information about our drug endangered children coalition? Okay.
He just.
Yeah, and we will talk to building grounds about changing the outside lane and the building.
That's great, yeah. Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your support.
She was reading that. I had no idea.
Yeah, yeah.
So thanks for what you're doing, ladies.
Thank you so much.
Yes, she did. She's not getting around.
The month over the lunch hour, if anyone would like to join us, it's via Zoom.
Where?
The second Tuesday of the month or Wednesday, excuse me, second Wednesday of the month over the lunch hour via Zoom, our Drug Endangered Children Coalition. So it's open to anybody who'd be interested in joining. I can make sure you get the invite. Send the information to Janet and show this to all of us.
Okay. Very good.
Can't believe we haven't added the.
Phil Mett here.
That stuff's wicked. I saw it on TV the other day over and over.
Yeah.
Only guy we can pronounce.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Really good. Right up front.
All right. Next up, we have Brenda May Waring, President, CEO, Iowa West Foundation, and Bethany Wilcoxen, Senior Advisor, McLaurin Associates, and Shalimar Mizadas, Advanced Southwest Iowa. Discussion and our decision to approve forty thousand dollars funding for the Minden Disaster and Recovery Resilience Planning Contract. Do we have anybody from the city of Minden here this morning? I don't see anybody. Okay. Well, the tornadoes that hit Potawatomi County on April twenty-sixth were devastating to the homeowners and commercial property owners, especially in the city of Minden. The next morning, Tim, Jeff and I responded by meeting with residents and government leaders to take a tour of Minden and Brian by helping his neighbors in the Crescent area. Also text messages from Brenda May Waring of the Iowa West Foundation and Donna Dostal from the Community Foundation of Western Iowa, wanting to know how they could help the county. Brenda and Donna quickly engaged with other foundations to set up relief funds and began strategizing on ways to leverage funding support. At our board meeting on April thirtieth, we heard from the county's department heads on how they mobilized staff and resources to assist across the county. It was an impressive show of response and support. Throughout the week, response gaps were identified and resources dispersed. Across the county, many of our employees were personally impacted. Minden, a city of six hundred people, was almost fifty percent destroyed. As a county leader, it wasn't difficult to do the math. The cost of the loss was huge, but we couldn't afford to lose fifty percent of Minden's population. Like many others, I got to thinking, maybe this disaster was an opportunity for Minden to build back better. What if there were absentee landowners who didn't want to rebuild their rental properties? Would they walk away and leave the mess for the city to clean up? What if we had a block that was now available to be rebuilt differently, perhaps like Neola's Lookout Village? A volunteer mayor and city council and full-time city clerk and maintenance crew cannot shoulder the lift to rebuild alone. Wouldn't it be great if we could hire a disaster recovery coordinator to handle the building permits, the disaster funding programs, zoning and help with the visioning process of what Minden could look like? Iowa West, Advanced Southwest Iowa, Iowa Western Community College, their Small Business Development Center, Community Foundation of Western Iowa, Charles E. Lakin Foundation and United Way were all at the table looking for ways to help. With the help of Iowa West and Advanced Southwest Iowa, a request for qualifications was drafted describing the services a consultant could provide. On July ninth, the Minden City Council approved the RFQ and selected McClure for the work on July thirtieth. With relationships already established by Iowa West, Advanced Southwest Iowa, the small cities and McClure, the community was already comfortable working with Bethany Wilcoxen and McClure. Since then, McClure has refined the scope and the fee and it is stated to go before the Minden Council on September tenth for approval. It's important to remember it's Minden's plan to own. And this morning McClure is here to present the program they have developed to assist Minden on their path to build back better. And Brenda May Waring will speak to the emergency response funds that were collected.
I will only say as a to start out that within five days of the April tornadoes, the Iowa West Foundation Board, I'm looking at Tara because she's our chair, um, had allocated resources for recovery. We knew at the outset that we, our expertise is not emergency assistance. There's all sorts of folks, Doug being chief among them, who do emergency response and they do it extremely well. Our job is to make sure that Minden continues to survive and thrive as a Potawatomi County community. So we have allocated a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars towards that, most of it to the benefit of Minden. I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But we recognize that the city, as as Susan pointed out, does not have the resources to to get a hold of all of the funding that is available to them. You don't have the long-term resources to allocate towards long-term recovery. So that's been our focus from the outset. We knew that somebody needed to be there to help and that is where we're working it. So I'll let Bethany describe the process.
Thank you. Good morning. Good to see you all again. Uh, so I'll just run through this at a pretty high level. You have all the details in your packet. But I've really been describing this to people as two parallel tracks. There's that immediate emergency support. How do we keep people in town? How do we keep get these businesses back open? How do we make sure we don't lose our population? Then the second piece is that long-term recovery. What does Minden look like a year from now, five years from now, twenty years from now? So working on both of those paths and they're not always parallel. Sometimes they're crisscrossing every which way, even within a day. Uh, so that's why you see that first piece of our scope is the ongoing emergency support, making sure we're coordinating with Doug in his group, other partners. Uh, also the agency coordination. I think the group that's been working pretty intimately on this has started calling it the alphabet soup agencies. So working with FEMA, working with Iowa Economic Development Authority, with uh Economic Development Administration from the federal level, USDA Rural Development, DOT, DNR, take your pick of those state and federal agencies. But making sure we're leveraging our relationships with them to get quick answers. These organizations are ready to help, but we want to make sure we facilitate that process and make it as smooth as possible. Another agency we're working with is MAPPA, Metropolitan Area Planning Agency. Uh, we've been meeting with them on a regular basis. Actually, we'll be at a city council in Minden with them tonight on a grant application to get some funding in town for housing, uh, town home units that will hopefully be affordable for everybody, uh, some disaster funding that has been available. So we're pushing to get that deadline. Uh, some of these things are really sprint, go, go, go.
Is that the governor's housing?
Uh, so this is the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Uh, with the other funding, I think you're referring to the new programs that the governor put out. Uh, there's a developer in town that actually was awarded six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so those will be uh three, fourplexes in town. There'll be rentals. Uh, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but they're going to be around eleven fifty for a two-bedroom, I'm gonna say thirteen fifty maybe for a three-bedroom. So that's going. Uh, the state is paying attention to the city of Minden. Uh, they know that the community needs support, so we've been taking advantage of that as much as possible.
Good.
Um, next up, that community messaging. We want to make sure we don't lose residents. Supervisor Miller has said that in twenty thirty, census number should be six oh one. So to stay on top of that and make sure we don't lose people, getting the message out. So this afternoon, for instance, there's a groundbreaking for C and A scales with their new facility. Uh, there's a plan as far as today, three thirty, if you're able to make it. Uh, so making sure we're telling that story, building the momentum uh within the community, because we really want to create that snowball effect. People are seeing all bad news. That's going to proliferate across town. But if we can tell that story about how we are in fact building back better, this takes some time. You know, tornado took everything out pretty quickly. This is going to take a while. Some of the communities we've looked at across the country, it's a decade until they are fully recovered and thriving. We hope it doesn't take that long in Minden, but this is a long process. Uh, so the last piece uh of our work is really the biggest, that long-term planning and partnering, starting with the vision, working with the community to understand what that vision is, identifying goals for how we reach that vision, and then from there, looking at projects. What are those housing projects, transportation, downtown-related projects that are going to help the community get back to a thriving place? Uh, complementing that are policies. What policies need to be put in place to achieve that vision? Uh, this is not going to be your typical comprehensive plan that lays out a bunch of great ideas, but no funding sources. We are going to figure out how to pay for it. Uh, hopefully grant funding, other options, but then how can the city also pay for some of these projects? And then lastly, partnerships. Yes, there's a ton of momentum right now as far as these partnerships and working together to support Minden. But what happens when that next disaster and the next disaster comes along? So making sure we have that really strong foundation in place. So that's going to be working in tandem with all of the other planning efforts as well. So want to just wrap up my comments. I give you a sampling of what's happening in town today. Know things have been a little quiet. Uh, but I mentioned the C and A groundbreaking. Uh, the bowling alley is looking to hold a grand opening the middle of October. We'll make sure we get that sent to you all. Uh, philanthropic coordination. Uh, we actually submitted a grant application to support the businesses last week. Uh, I mentioned the housing through the state. That'll be going in before the end of the month. Uh, coordination with Eagle Engineering, which has been the city engineer. Uh, our engineer, I can point to my colleague, Matt, uh, one of our many engineers that have been supporting the community. Uh, making sure we're coordinating, tapping into those federal relationships and funding opportunities. Uh, property acquisitions, so we make sure that if people aren't building back, the city can get control of these properties to open them up for additional housing opportunities. Uh, we're working with Iowa Economic Development Authority for their Emergency Catalyst Program to make sure we preserve downtown buildings as we can. Uh, coupled with that business outreach, uh, we've also been working on an urban renewal district. So there can be some potential for tax increment financing funds and then helping with web postings as possible to make sure we're getting that message out. So there's a lot happening, even if you're not seeing it right now, uh, but expect to really see that ramp up in the coming weeks and months.
You mentioned the comp plan. How old is it?
Uh, I don't even know that Minden has a comp plan.
Well, they got one. We did them for all the communities to get any kind of grant funds.
They have a strategic plan that would have been, the last time I know for a fact that it was updated would have been two thousand eighteen.
And and did MAPPA do that?
Uh, MAPPA did, yes. It was underneath the old cities program.
Yeah.
They're required to have it in order to apply for cities funding. They have a CIP, which is a continuous improvement plan, which is required underneath the new vibrant rural communities program.
Yeah.
Um, and it is basically the same thing. So and they've got that updated. We we work on that on a monthly basis.
So are they having, are you sure they're having a community member group sessions on what they want to see in their community in five and ten years then?
Absolutely. So we're looking at early October for those events. We're trying to weave it between a number of uh trips with multiple team members. So looking at early October, I think October seventh is a Monday night is what we tentatively are looking at.
And you talked about the city procuring uh lots or homes from people. They're doing that on uh per negotiated basis?
Yeah, so it's a strategic opportunity that we're looking at right now. There are about, uh, there are three different lots that are all on the same block. And so it opens up a nice opportunity for some potential townhomes, which are sorely needed. Uh, we're looking at those being owner occupied units, so we don't have too many rentals in town, making sure we have that good mix.
You gotta, you gotta get the present owner of the property.
Yeah, so these are homes that were taken out and those owners have chosen not to rebuild on those lots and so it presented a prime opportunity for us.
The city's got funding to buy the lots.
There is grant funding to buy those lots. Yep, we're working through that process right now.
Is it through an ordinance?
Their procurement?
Yeah.
It's no, no, there's no, this is all voluntary. Owners do not want to rebuild, all voluntary. They don't want to rebuild, they don't want to come back, they want to, they want to see Minden do well though. And so they recognize that city ownership creates some momentum. And they've been giving good prices. Not outrageous, but.
Somebody was telling me, I don't know how accurate this was, that all the stuff on what I'd call maybe the north side of the main street can't rebuild there, i.e. the the butcher, the butcher, the meat market, all that stuff has to relocate on what I assume is the south side of the street if they want to stay.
So we're actually working through that right now with the state, uh, McClure also has structural engineers.
State.
With the state, with Iowa Economic Development Authority, uh, with their catalyst grant. So that is to ensure a strong downtown in communities across the state. So first step of that is doing a structural assessment uh to see, are these buildings salvageable or not? If they are, the preference, of course, from the the city perspective and the state perspective would be to keep them downtown. So really, we have those strong triangle businesses and have a community gathering spot that people are coming downtown, the opportunity to interact with your neighbors, and maybe they're going to the meat market and then they're going to swing by the grocery store and oh, I saw my friend go into the Minden Bowl, so I'm going to stop in there. So how do we support these small businesses? So the Emergency Catalyst Program is designed from a statewide perspective, could offer a hundred thousand dollars per business uh to make sure if they're meeting some of these design standards, we're what I'll call a traditional downtown, uh, that they could help stay downtown.
So I think if you went to Minden and stood on a street corner just and got opinions, the one thing you'd hear is it's taking too long. I don't think you would hear any other complaints about the process, because from the first week, Shalimar, Bethany, Chairwoman Miller, we sat down with representatives and the reader, we sat down with the representatives from the city of Minden and said, what do you need? How do you want to do it? They have been a hundred percent involved with this. Um, everybody understands there's not enough money in individuals in the county with philanthropy to rebuild Minden. There is a lot of money available at the state and the federal level. The goal is to bring in those dollars, which we all understand have strings attached, in a way that serves the interest of Minden. And that that's the main reason why McClure is involved, to help find out what money's available, what fits with their needs and bring that money into to serve the interest of it. So the question about rebuilding, working very closely with Iowa Economic Development to understand the restrictions of their program. Economic development is being very accommodating, because they've been to Minden half of the times at least.
The governor's been there.
The governor's been there twice to come and see it, to understand what's there and to understand how it how it can be rebuilt in a way that serves the interest of Minden. So as Chairwoman Miller said, this is being driven by the city of Minden. Um, when we, Iowa West came in, um, we allocated a hundred ninety-five thousand. Fifty thousand of that went to the Community Foundation for Western Iowa as a match, so they could fundraise. They did hugely successful fundraising. That's available for um unmet needs. So that goes to individuals per their process. Another hundred and ten thousand went straight out to the volunteer fire departments that responded to any of the the calls that night from the tornado. We understand they have costs, didn't even make them apply for it besides send us a letter saying, yeah, we responded and we sent them a check for ten thousand dollars. So eleven of the fourteen volunteer fire departments in Potawatomi County responded. They got their money. We have thirty-five thousand that we reserved to say we know there's going to be some emerging needs, we want to hold on to that thirty-five thousand. So for the, what's the total amount on your budget?
One ninety-two.
One, so of that, um, thirty-five thousand is coming from us. Um, I have been working very closely with United Way from the very beginning and the money that they collected for Iowa, Nebraska, I was going to make sure came to Iowa. So seventy-five thousand of it is being dedicated. Minden has already received that money, I believe, and it's dedicated for this long-term rebuilding. There's a part for the new homes on what's being called the North Forty. We believe there's going to be IEDA resources available to help with that planning, so that's not part of the budget. So that leaves just shy of forty thousand. So that leaves just shy of 40,000 remaining to pay for this long-term coordinator out of the 192. And that's what we're coming to.
It's long term.
Long term is the five or 10 years.
Up to 24 years, 24 months.
24 months of this process.
Two years.
Yeah.
Two years. That's not really long term.
Well, when the recovery is.
Right. When it comes to stuff like this, I mean, they got greenfield that's just about as bad, if not worse than. I hate to even say that. And then they got the same stuff on the news. Since we're dominated by the news of Nebraska where they're having a heck of a time building over there where they tore out the houses and out corn and stuff.
Two years of the contract to secure the funds and will it be done? No. But will the process have moved forward enough that we know what funds are available and what can be spent?
They'll have a vision.
Yeah, correct. In essence, the city needs a city administrator, the skills of a city administrator. And somebody who can leverage all of those funds and McClure knows those resources better than anybody. And they're already mobilized and if we were to. Pay for a city administrator to work for all of the cities, it would cost us far more than that. What McClure can also provide is an outline for future disasters. It's like, well, here's kind of the process we went through with Minden. Let's repeat it. Say, for example, that OSI closes in Oakland. Well, you lose a large employer. Well, what can we do to fill that gap? And I just think it's a good partnership.
You asked earlier, Scott, about the the planning, community planning. With the cities program previously and now again with Vibe. It's Iowa West who's saying, look, you cities have to have a plan and for the most part, we're. If a, if a city doesn't have the resources to do that on their own, we're supporting. We did it when we were first working with the RPCIC very closely with county to say, and it was McClure who developed those relationships. And developed those long-term plans. We 100% recognize communities don't have the resources to do it on their own. They have to have some help in order to put the structure in place so they have that.
Where was this funding?
I've talked with Mitch and we have availability in the gaming account, correct?
So is this contract?
Forty thousand dollar out of gaming for Minden disaster and recovery.
Is this contract with?
I'm second.
McClure has a contract with the city in Minden.
They have a contract with us too, right? Or with you?
No.
Well, we're not, we're, we're not doing the R, R C I P stuff.
The contract, we do not contract directly with McClure. For the Vibe advancement and for RPCIC, we provide the funds to.
Do you have the contract for that?
But this is between McClure and the city of Minden.
Okay.
So Heather, on the RPCSE project for Minden, have you secured all the grants for that project to move forward?
So in Shalimar, feel free to weigh in here. They were actually in the midst of going to bid on their project. Water mains.
Sounds good.
Then the tornado hit what the day before.
Yeah.
It was to go to bid. So it's gotten put on hold, but I I think, and Matt, feel free to weigh in. We've had some coordination meetings with Eagle Engineering. We've been working with Economic Development Administration as well. They are very interested in funding water projects to support economic development. They really come in when there are disasters. So it sounds like we'll have a substantial amount coming from them as well. That should help cover the remainder of that initial project and then a little bit more as well.
So that project is funded?
Everything's funded. Everything's good to go.
Have you wore out your grant contacts for that?
You can never wear those out. My philosophy is always the worst thing people can say is no, but it's our job to ask a question. You know, we're advocating on behalf of, in this instance, Minden or for RPCIC, now Vibe, all of those different communities. I know there's one project we are working on with a certain community, other community in the county. And we're also going to be pursuing it for the ball fields for Minden. But it's about the communities. It's not about us. We're just facilitating that.
I, I was there when the government was there multiple times and it was impressive to hear her talk about the opportunities. She's basically the one that's pushing for this, her office, I mean.
No, she is not. But if you consider her office to be Debbie Durham in economic development. She's been on those phone calls with us several times and very much involved. We're checking all along the way. We're confirming with Doug that this meets his needs. We're confirming with economic development that it meets their needs. This is the process that everybody has signed up on. Everybody's comfortable with it.
Debbie knows how to work a touchy.
So we balancing owner occupied with these rentals that were all mentioned. I mean, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of a true, true community, the owner occupied. I mean, that's part of the problem that's happened with this community, with this tornado exposed. Was the amount of rental properties that were.
So here's an interesting angle on that. When somebody's 70, they want to stay in their community.
No.
They don't necessarily want to own another home.
I, I understand.
So some of it, you know, is tailored towards the need of the community with the input.
But you'd like to have younger people coming to your community.
By freeing up some of those older residents who can move into. A home that they don't have to worry about using up their resources and their home is now available for somebody else.
Preston has a lot of problems.
But I don't know the home inventory of the age of the homes that are there. You know, I mean, it's no similar than the the west end where those homes were built the last. Thirty-five, maybe 50 years at best. And now they're going on to 70 and 80 years.
I think one of the driving forces for all of us involved with this, and especially for Minden, as you saw actually in the non-prell this morning.
The non-prell?
There was a story in the non-prell this morning about Minden. There, it's time, right? I mean, if you, we have to get this moving. We have to get these structures rebuilt. We have to give people some confidence. That they will have a place to live in Minden so that they won't leave.
Yeah.
And set up life elsewhere.
Yes.
I, I would also say that Minden has started an industrial foundation similar to what Oakland Industrial Foundation is doing. Which is taking those infill houses that are needing to come down or needing repair and that kind of thing. And updating them into a workforce house ready. So that means the problem here. Even hasn't worked.
It's an evolving thing.
It is. But they're, they are hands down completely on top of it. Open to any suggestions, ready to hit boots to the ground and start working.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for what you're doing, ladies, all of you.
So didn't, can we, can we get whatever a quarterly update from the McClure or from?
Absolutely.
Doug's kind of very involved with all the meetings. So at least until it's no longer in his disaster category. You can get updates from him too, whenever you want.
Well, yeah.
He's staring at it every week, aren't you, Doug?
He's gonna want 40 grand too.
So we have a motion by Shay, a second by Jorgensen to approve $40,000 for funding for the McClure. McClure Plan for the Contractor for Minden Disaster and Recovery Resilience Plan from the Gaming Fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing it, thanks.
All right. Doug Ray, Director, Emergency Management Agency Discussion on Recovery Update.
Just for the record, I'm not going to ask you for 40,000.
No, 400.
Today.
400,000.
I'm just going to ask you for 10,000, but I'm going to come to it four different times. Just a couple of quick updates and thank you for your vote on the last topic. That's going to be critical to make this happen. And just to kind of address your housing stock deal, like, like was mentioned a little bit before. The city of Minden has really been completely involved and, and they have discussed early on just what your concern was. Right? As far as not making, you know, everything rental and trying to balance that out. And so with the first new construction project through the governor's grant program being. You know, rental units, obviously you can, you know, extrapolate a concern from that. But the city's involved with, with those projects or those grants being, so they've got to kind of sign off on that stuff before they're ever awarded. So.
Those were, those were, the numbers they threw out were pretty healthy rents.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen those details.
And if they don't include, if they don't include the utilities and such like that.
Yeah.
I don't know what the average income.
I know at the time that, that the press release on that and some initial info came out, they, they didn't even have the grant agreements done yet. They were just putting out the nervous intent to the board. So we'll, we'll see some more details. But on to the current. Some of the things we're doing last week, we got everybody's request for public assistance through FEMA submitted for the disaster. Period occurring May 20th through 31st. So organizations that indicated they had costs or damages from that storm on the public sector sites and governments qualifying. They'll be assigned a PDMG once those applications, initial applications are approved and, and we'll start working, working those projects. This week we'll be submitting another application to FEMA for the departments involved in the flood period. So that would be about June 16th to July 23ish, I believe. So those will go in this week. You'll see emails coming out to department heads later today just to remind them. If they haven't said anything yet, they've got a couple of days to make it happen. And then a week after that, then we'll focus back on the, the April stuff because that got extended through with a subject. This week we're shifting our disaster recovery center operations on the FEMA individual assistance side. So last week, just having a holiday, we closed up the location at the Veterans Affairs Office. This morning they're setting up a mobile site at Oakland City Hall so we can capture. The third disaster period that ran in conjunction with the floods. The plan right now is after they've been there through the weekend, that they will move that mobile unit to the city of Crescent. If we can get those contracts secured for a site, just having a little trouble getting, getting some of the I's dotted and T's crossed. There's just not a whole lot of. Really accessible locations up there for that big old thing and their tents and, you know, make sure we can get it done. We've got, we're partnering Council of Schools right now to use the elementary site and use that. It'll, it'll meet what FEMA needs. We just got to get, get it signed off by school administration and get that up to FEMA. So hopefully we can wrap that up here in the next 24, 48 hours. Then after they're done there, they're going to move, hopefully we'll get them moved back to the Lakin Campus for another week and a half. And then after that, FEMA Individual Assistance will be done as far as active recovery centers in the county. We are working with the state and two other counties in Iowa right now. To establish a long-term disaster recovery center, one here in Potawatomi County. And then I believe potentially in Sioux and Clay counties. I can't remember. I know Clay County is one of them. I can't remember the third off the top of my head. But that will host folks that can assist people with individual needs that are ongoing. Guided off of our, our ongoing assessment that we have out there for people to fill out. We're still pulling debt off of that and getting people matched up with some local resources or state programs as they apply. It will also have an agricultural component to it for farmers that might still need some assistance or have questions. There should be a small footprint of FEMA folks that will join us there to help people continue to, you know, just deal with documentation. Or mess with their appeals or anything that they need help with while that's still going on. So more information to come on that. And I believe really the last thing that we wanted to discuss, I don't, is this the part for the flood mitigation stuff? That's next. Okay. So that's good for this part of the update then, unless you have any questions.
Given all these counties or cities ample time to get on the FEMA bandwagon.
More than, there's been no shortage of emails that have gone out to.
No.
So. We, we got a good number of them. I'm, I'm not overly worried about it. I just. You know, kind of like we did with, with the, the public event a week ahead of, of the FEMA application deadline and, and to, you know, for them. Folks in the Crescent area, we just wanted to make sure we did our due diligence. So.
Well, they did it on radio and TV and I mean, so. But they didn't get it. They got nobody to blame but themselves.
Yeah, that's, that would be my theory, but I'm going to remind them up till the last day. So good deal.
Good job on what you're doing, Doug.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we'll move to discussion and our decision on county participation at flood property acquisition.
Okay. So we have three federally declared disasters with each one, a percentage of the total losses are calculated by FEMA at the end of the day. And a percentage of those total losses is awarded to the state of Iowa in the form of disaster mitigation grant funds. That is then opened up statewide for that competitive grant program, if you will. And there are established priorities by the state on, on what projects qualify for that. Obviously with flooding occurring all over Iowa, flood, floodplain acquisition projects or, you know, loosely termed flood buyout projects. Will be eligible as an expense and we need to get in notice of interest if the county wants to participate.
So can we have homeowners that are interested in this?
I have only been made aware of one phone call that's been received and, and that's all I have heard about. Matt, did that come into your office?
Yeah, we got one phone call, property owner interested in it.
Where?
I think it was Marty West.
West?
Yeah. 122nd Street. They're on the east side of the, the east side of the interstate. They, they finally. I didn't think that. There was no damage to the structure. It was just.
This time there wasn't?
No, it's an elevated structure that was constructed after 2012. They elevated after 2012.
That's someone that sits up high.
It sits up high. So I mean, it's just loss of access really.
It must, yeah, it was surrounded by water again.
I'm sure.
Roadway. Part of it, part of it was too. So. With, so what's there? They just said they're interested this time possibly?
They just, the only thing that was asked was if the county was going to be offering that again this time around. But I thought, you know, we were pretty clear back in with the 2019 disaster. We held that big meeting out at Iowa Western and state, everybody was there. That, you know, this could very well be the last opportunity you have for a flood buyout if you want it. You need to jump on board now. A lot of them did. And then, you know, that program, these programs aren't fast. It's not like you just get a check. You know, you say, hey, I want to flood buyout. So during that process of it, then a number of them did drop off, but. Like I said, we've only, only been contacted by the one person and we're just gauging our interest in it.
It would, it would be my recommendation to the board that we not participate in this round of activities. I think it's with, with the after. Stuff going all the way back to 93 even, but you know, 2011, especially 2019. It's been ample opportunity and with the, the buyout mitigation that has been done, our values at risk up there. We're at least just discussing residential property, which is the focus of this, this project, not anything else. And, and the significant reduction in life safety issues up in that area. Just not really seeing the juice worth the squeeze for the county to end up owning more green space. And go through that lengthy process and have a lot more stuff off the tax rolls. It just doesn't seem to be anything gained at this point.
Is it a 75, 10, 15% still?
Yeah.
There, there, there have been no current indications or discussions that there'd be something available. Like we saw in 19 with the flood mitigation board, offering that, that special flood funding that we had before. Hasn't really been on the table. Not saying that it wouldn't be, but as of right now, I've got an indication that that's in the works.
I, I do agree with Doug on that. I mean, that's why we made such a hard push in 2019. And called that big meeting, had all the landowners there to make sure that they understood, you know, this time, this was, we got 100% funded for that flood buyout. If you want to be involved in it, you need to be involved in it now. Because in 2012, I want to, I think the county spent over a million dollars of county funds doing those buyouts. And I mean, that's what we wind up left with is a patchwork quilt of ground that we then have to maintain into perpetuity. Some of it, we do have leased out, but some of it we don't, and we do have to, and irregardless of it, once a year, we have to go buy and check it. Every five years is a bigger survey that we have to fill out. So it all ends up adding up in staff time and cost to the county, regardless of a hundred percent funding or not, but. We have to come back, you know, if we were to come back around this time, I mean, it's gonna cost the county, just like it did in twenty twelve. And I think there was an awful warning and opportunity, and like Doug said, I mean, we've reduced our risk so much in that area.
Well, I don't remember if you shared the list for the properties with me or Doug, yeah, somebody did, majority of those were in Goose Haven, right?
There's a number of the small cabins up there in Goose Haven.
Yeah, and they were. They were offered in that twenty nineteen flight.
Oh, yeah, and eleven, yeah.
And they're, the majority of them are now under single ownership.
Well, the, the ground, my understanding is owned by one individual.
And the cabins now too.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, he's made major improvements out there to what's going on.
So if we, if we were able to get one hundred percent funding for this particular. Flood, you still would recommend we not move forward with it?
If we had one hundred percent funding, I, then yeah, of course I would say that we should potentially go after that. I mean, you're still quite a bit of time invested on the county side, even a hundred percent funding, but.
But we can't get it if we don't apply.
They.
Right?
They walk away from the table, at the end of the day, they can walk away from the table.
It's, it is a total voluntary process, you can walk out up until the time you sign closing documents.
We have one do that at the last, last day.
Right.
Yeah.
You can.
He sold that place and I think that guy wanted, bought out this time.
We do, that's where. It's just the dedication and time and resources from the county side.
Deadline to file?
It's open, right?
It's open until when?
Until they say it's closed, they don't, they don't have a date on it. Cause we still have open active disasters going on, so until those close up and they do the final tallies and, and decide on funding.
We have some time.
If they decided on.
There's some, there's some time, probably not a ton, but, you know, we can, we can try and squeeze them again for another deadline.
Before we applied in twenty nineteen, I think it's why, maybe where you're getting at, before we applied in twenty nineteen, we did know that we were going to have a hundred percent funding.
Yeah, I don't wanna commit to the project without the funding.
Yeah, we knew that ahead of time before we submitted.
We don't know that now.
Well, like his, like Doug said, there's not been any conversation. I think the flood board at that time had funding that they were. Well, it was not something that I don't think they have, they don't get funded every year.
No, they, I mean, they've got what they got right now.
Yeah.
They're still, we're still working on nineteen projects. And I, and again, I haven't, I've.
We're not, correct?
What's that?
My county is not, is it?
Nineteen?
Well, we, we have some, we have some FEMA nineteen projects on, so some of that might be used. To help with local match kind of stuff potentially, but I think all of our like drainage district, levy district projects were, were what we had going. With that, and I can't remember, did, did you have some in the, in that grant program for the. Some of that come for the buyouts that got done in nineteen?
Housing is done, yeah.
Oh, for twenty?
Finished those up not too long ago, am did, didn't she?
Beginning of this year.
Yeah. And we, I do, and we got all our money back from them, yeah?
We answered shake and said yes.
We have it all now.
We got it all in.
Even, even.
Nineteen to twenty four, that was five years. Before we got our money from the feds.
Yeah, and I think twenty twelve, it was around five, six years.
It was about the same thing.
Before we were.
Checks in the ma, checks in the mail.
So we can kinda set on it, see what percentages and who's interested.
Yeah, we can, I, you know, I've been appointed to the flood mitigation board. Anyway, so I gotta do it, I'm gonna hear about it. Um, but my, my opinion for the board would stay the same, whether it's, you know, fifteen percent. They're doing a day cover a hundred percent, because I just, you know, at this point with everything's been done and all the opportunities we've had, I'm just not sure what the, you know, the county's interest or the county benefit, public benefit is. At this point, what we have at risk up there, however, I would. Always defer that opinion to Matt's office, cause he's the one that's gonna manage about me, so.
Does this board need to vote that either up or down?
I, I don't think you need to take any action, we just needed to have the discussion and if you do, you do, if you don't, you don't. If you wanna wait, I'll just keep my ear tied to the ground on, on deadlines and have another conversation with the state. Throw a peeler out to the folks that run the FNB and see if there's been any chatter, but. If, if that stuff comes up, I'll certainly notify Matt right away and, and get back up here. Cause it's, take five minutes to submit a notice of interest when you have. You know, just pull the assessment data on. Potential properties, total max potential property, it's not that big of a deal, right?
Uh, just leave her sit?
Yeah, that's fine, I appreciate it Doug, but if we don't have more than just that person interested, I'm not really pursuing it, I, the chances. After this one, getting a hundred percent paid, I just. See that happening.
Yeah, I, it's, you know, you guys can have that, that, that debate if it does become a hundred percent paid, I guess.
You'll keep us informed.
Absolutely.
Thank you Doug.
Deadlines will be in the daily reports.
Thanks Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you for those daily reports, by the way. All right, next up Terrace Levin, Chief Philanthropy.
I can never say that, that's all right, neither can I have the time.
Chief Philanthropy Officer and Janine Vandenberg, Chief Nursing Officer, Methodist Jenny Edmondson Hospital. And we've asked them to come in to give us an update on their telemetry.
Well, again, good morning, thank you again for the opportunity to come back before you and update you on the both the progress as well as an update on where we stand with this project. A project that really, thanks to the support of the supervisors, we were able to fast track and move from being the beginning installation in twenty twenty six. To being able to proudly say we'll have installed our final monitor in, in the end of twenty twenty six. So today during our update, we wanted to, to, again, thank you for the incredible upgrade in the infrastructure. And the equipment, but I also wanted to take a moment to reflect back on the profound impact that you had on our staff at that time. A time that we will all remember were some of the darkest days in healthcare, a time when our staff was overwhelmed, they were scared, they were. Heartbroken over the patients and the family that were losing. For you to step forward at a time like that really made a profound impact, you let us know that you were with us, you were standing beside us and that we were not in this fight alone. And I, we will always be internally grateful for your support in that. As our conversations and many of you will remember will continued over twenty twenty one and into twenty twenty two. It was the April fifth session that we came back to ask you to support our telemetry initiative. Initiative that at the time met the obligations and requirements that the board of supervisors had set out. To review those, it was that the project itself would benefit the residents of council of Potawatomi County. It was directly tied to COVID nineteen, it was shovel ready, and that this project was dependent on these funds to ensure its success and timely implementation. So to talk through a little bit of the benefit to Potawatomi County, we are really proud to share it and remind you that Jenny Edmondson Hospital is one of the oldest hospitals. In Council Bluffs and we have, I've not worked with a hundred and thirty five years, but we have been supporting this community for a hundred and thirty five years. We are committed to bringing state of the art equipment and technology to this, to this community as evident in our last two projects. Where in just the beginning of twenty twenty five, we opened our two state of the art cath labs, about a seven million dollar investment. And then in twenty twenty six, we are proud to say we are part of the new behavioral health hospital that will open up, which again will be about a fifty five million dollar investment into this community. But also most importantly too, we are here to support some of our most vulnerable members of our community. Members who can't travel to other locations often to get care, many of these are uninsured and underinsured. And oftentimes that cost is about an eight to ten million dollar write-off to the hospital each year. Write-offs that only comple, or complement the significant strain that we already have on keeping up with the upgrades in technology and equipment. For these essential services, financial pressures that are felt on a very thin margin. So again, it is thanks to the county who stepped forward because this telemetry system upgrade, when complete. Will ensure that we are able to take care of thousands of more residents each year in Potawatomi County, close to home and not having to redirect. Some to Omaha because we don't have the facilities. So to talk a little bit about the shovel ready and where we are in our time rest, timeline and progress. Shortly after meeting on April fifth, we went back to our hospital administration and they then began to start the clock on their final due diligence. By the end of twenty twenty two, we began to see the infrastructure being placed in the areas that we were first gonna start and we were proud to see. The first monitors of many being placed by the end of twenty twenty three, make, showing a significant milestone in that progress. At the same time, we also began meeting with several funders in the community and we're lucky enough and fortunate enough to partner with the Southwest Iowa Foundation. Who stepped forward with a hundred thousand dollar grant to be paid out over three years, which you will note in the document that I've shared with the board. Additionally, Methodist Jenny Edmondson Hospital realigned some of their capital expenses and committed to over one point five million dollars of funds to this project. This substantial commitment allowed us to then have the county's contribution of five hundred thousand dollars to be the last in. And be the final piece in our funding puzzle to move forward. In the document that we've included in your packet, we have outlined this. Of the over one point five million dollars by Methodist Jenny Edmondson Hospital, one million, two hundred and thirty one thousand, five hundred and ninety three dollars and thirty six cents to be exact. Has already been paid out and or will be paid out by the end of December twenty twenty four. Recognizing that the ARPA funding needed to be expended by the end of twenty twenty six, we have allotted for those dollars in the, in the allocation to be in twenty twenty five and the very first couple of months in twenty twenty six. With this calculation, we believe that the ARPA money does fit into those requirements and that we have made the last in requirement. Because both the hospital and Southwest Iowa Foundation have already started to pay on their commitments. We also do wanna recognize that yes, the last payment from the hospital does come in in twenty twenty six. And again, this will come as no surprise and like most local hospitals, we often have a lot more needs and expenses than we have funds available, so. With reshuffling some of those priorities on the front end, they've been now moved to twenty twenty five, so that way capital dollars are once again available in twenty twenty six. Which will close out this project, however, they have been pledged and secured in the budget. So yes, the county was not only there to help us bridge the gap in that financial crisis that we had, but also to help us prioritize this project. So if you will, it helped us jump the line and thanks to your support, we are able to now increase the number of beds. That we have to support those acute patients within our community and to meet those demands that we saw not only in the pandemic, but also we see. Today with this, with our nursing shortages and things like that, we still have a lot of opportunities to, to pull this all together. But to really, so it's not so technical to give a little bit more personal side of the impact of this project, not only to our clinical staff and our patients, but also on our service staff. I've asked Janine Vandenberg, who is our Chief Nursing Officer, to join us and share a little bit more about the actual project itself. Since I can barely say telemetry, so she's really gonna get into the grits of this, it's taken me two years to get that down and not be telling machines. And also the impact on our staff, so Janine?
Thank you, thank you all for having me this morning and allowing me to come and talk about our telemetry project. So I've had the pleasure of being a registered nurse at Jenny Ed for fourteen years actually, over fourteen years now. And the level of service that we are providing now in Council Bluffs and in Potawatomi County. Has substantially elevated over the years and this project is really part of that elevation. What we're really working on is being able to serve our community and do that locally and stop unfortunately having to send patients across the river to Nebraska. The telemetry initiative was chosen because of the direct relevance to the challenges that was posed by COVID nineteen. At the peak of the pandemic, our hospital faced the harsh reality of having to turn patients away for lack of beds and telemetry capable beds. The shortage of telemetry monitors was critical. The average COVID nineteen patient requires extended hospitalization with close telemetry monitoring during that process. While we worked. Sorry. While we worked through all the struggles every day of providing the care that we needed to with the very limited resources we had. This process and being able to elevate and escalate the timeline for our telemetry project has really allowed us. To expand and enhance our capabilities and capacity at Jenny Edmondson for our patients. Your decision to fund this initiative has made a tangible difference. And not only in our ability to care for the COVID nineteen patients, but in protecting our most vulnerable patients. In the community and supporting the clinical staff on the front lines. Your message was so powerful to our staff, it really made them realize they weren't alone during the pandemic. And we really cannot thank you enough for that and how supported they felt. What our nurses experienced during the pandemic, I hope we never have to see again, it's not just the nurses, it was the families, they were isolated. And in their most critical times and what we endured and the amount of human loss we suffered was tragic and. Being at Jenny, when we would have to send these family members across the river, they're already stressed out and then we couldn't provide the services. Having the ability to have telemetry on all of our patient, all of our acute care beds is a game changer for us. It's allowing us to provide a higher level of care here in our community and not have to send people to Omaha anymore. So I really just wanna say thank you so much for that, a little details, so in twenty two, we did start the, the work. We had to do a lot of planning, our entire network infrastructure had been aged out. Everything had to be, and I'll, I'll do it, I'm not an electrician, but the electricians had to come in and rewire the entire hospital. So that actually had to be done before we could start the actual work of upgrading the physical monitors that we're talking about here. And that's very expensive as well as you can see laid out on the document here put together for us. So we got that process started as fast as we could, I'm happy to say that all of the wiring was completed. And our ICU, which is our most critical area, was upgraded by the end of twenty three. So we started there because we wanted to be thoughtful and really make sure we were being as responsible as we could with the limited amount of money we had in order to make sure we could not just. Upgrade our system to the current needs and the standard of care, but also make sure that we expanded to all of our beds. And the ability, what we also learned during the pandemic was sometimes we had to expand beyond what we had, we would double patients in the rooms, unfortunately. Nobody likes to share a room when they're sick, but we also didn't wanna send them out of our community anymore. And we wanted to also bring in patients from our outside critical access hospitals, so that's something else that Jenny, we're very proud of. We partner with all of our community access hospitals and have a direct line into our ED providers, so if the community. Access hospital can't provide the level of care, they can call and talk directly to our providers and we transfer those patients over to Jenny. So they can at least stay in Iowa and hopefully be close to their family as possible while they receive that care. So for the rest of this project this year, I'm excited to say that slated for the end of October, I will have. Telemetry capable monitoring in all of our acute beds. So that is very exciting and the numbers are added on here, you can see that, so that's the twenty nine that we'll be bringing in, that will do. If you're familiar with Jenny Ed, the fourth floor is currently does not have any telemetry and have never had, so that will be done and completed by the end of. I can say next month now already, goodness, it's September, so. You know, I just really wanted to say thank you again for the support that you have shown by giving us this and allowing us to elevate the level of care. And providing my staff with the resources to provide the best care possible.
I came up and took a tour. That was really insightful. I really believe in what you're doing, that's good for Potawatomi County, Council Bluffs, all of Southwest Iowa. And I see no better money being spent from ARPA. So with that, I would make a motion to approve this.
Isn't it, aren't we already approved?
We have, we approved that, I just, it's on here and. So. We approved that two years ago?
So it was approved but not tied to any funding, that was one of the caveats, go back and watch the meeting. I think the motion originally was, we're gonna approve the five hundred thousand out of ARPA, but then the supervisor told the times that, let's not tie this to ARPA. So that way if the timing was different, so basically you've approved it. But the funding source has not been dedicated yet.
Didn't we set aside a million for ARPA? Didn't we set aside a million for ARPA? Or half for them, half for the other hospital whose project fell apart?
My recollection, Brian, is that we did.
I thought we did.
You know, and if I if I can, Tara, you will be requesting funding from the county in twenty-five and twenty-six.
Yes, depending on, if I, again, if I remember correctly, you had to spend it in two thousand twenty-four, and then it would be spent in two thousand twenty-five or two thousand twenty-six, but it's really however that works best for you guys.
It has to be obligated. So if the county, if the board would like to obligate it out of ARPA funds, you should put that in a motion so I can put that with my reports. As of right now, I do not have any obligation from the board. It's been in our capital plan and budgeted for, but we don't have anything dedicating it to ARPA funds. It's just an open. We approve five hundred thousand dollars. If you want to give it out of gaming instead, I can.
No, we did this out of ARPA. I'm almost a hundred percent sure.
That was the intent.
Yes, okay. Well, on my motion, I'd like to add that it be taken out of our funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Shay and a second by Bell to approve five hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funds to Jenny Edmiston Hospital.
I'm almost having a flashback on this same.
Maybe you should go up to the telemetry thing.
Feel again, but.
But I think that's what it is. How it kind of played out was the board wanted to approve the five hundred at ARPA. Then they changed like, well, if we want to give them more, if there's other projects or emergencies that came up.
Mitch, how much is left in that?
Nothing. That's that's all.
Well, I mean, with counting yours, I mean, nothing after that. Well, Mitch, you'll get with young and prosperous for that.
However, that works to.
Yeah, and you know, with obligations, however, need to get that lined up for when I'm recording it for this year. And make sure you guys send it, you send it back, and we're going to blame.
We already have it spent. No problem.
So you don't have it spent. You have, you were spending.
We haven't allocated to spend, and I think when we get it there, happy to move up some of those dollars. Believe it or not, they won't let us spend it before we get it in the door.
All those in favor?
I can get a second in.
Against?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in, ladies. Really appreciate it. I was totally impressed when I came up there.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
The monitors were full, or we would have brought one to show and tell, but if you ever want to come and see it in motion as a visitor and not a patient, we'd love to give you a tour. Patient as well, but yeah.
I didn't hear, maybe I was maybe. You didn't make any mention of occupational health, did you?
Uh, no, that was part of CHI's project with their cardiac, do you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, occupational health, yes. I believe we've been working well on that.
We.
I know I got an email from Jen. And since you're here, I want to ask, Tara, are we are we moving forward with that? And is the facility ready to go for that?
Yes, we're actually in a much better position than where we were. The occupational health location itself has now moved to the new medical office building. And so there's that parking lot. They'll go right in there. And because it is tied into where the urgent care is now, instead of an eight to five, it's a ten to seven, and also has weekend hours and availability. So I really believe the service that we're going to be able to provide is hundred times better than what where we started out in some of those early conversations.
We need it big time.
And I will give a huge shout out to Janet, her team, who have really been diligent and not just making sure we have a contract one, but that one that really takes care of the many different types of employees that you have. And oh my God, the tons of regulations, as though she and her team have been very wonderful to work with, but also very good stewards of the county dollars.
When will that contract come to the board for approval with the cost center we can arm wrestle about?
Yeah, and we have already arm wrestled with them about it.
I know, yeah.
Yep. We're still waiting on a final, there's a final PTPs that has to come through because that might be a separate contract. But we have had our first workers' comp employee go to the facility, and it's working just fine. So we are actively with the occupational health team over at the new location. And the contract will be coming as soon as we get it, but we all agree that we're going to work together regardless of the contract right now because we need their help for our employees. So far, it's been working great. Yeah, so we are officially moved over, contract pending.
Yes.
Bringing that service.
It says give presentation and provide an update.
That's a big complaint that we had to go on, West Omaha, Miller.
Yeah, it was it was Miller.
Miller.
Very.
I got thirty minutes away. Nina's Marshes still. She's a lot of fun.
You're very lucky to have her.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in today. Appreciate your guys' continued partnership. Thank you.
And a good friend.
Matt Wyatt, Director, Planning and Development, discussion and our decision to approve the purchase of a recycling trailer for the courthouse campus.
That's great. That thing's free, huh? Yes, sir. I wanted to make first, like, start off with, I'm not asking the board for any money on this. This was a budgeted expense and with the recycling center's budget. But I had been asked by the former director of conservation, you guys might remember Mark Schumaker, he retired from here a while ago. But to provide a recycling container out here for the courthouse campus, because he would go around and pick up plastic bottles from everybody and take them down and and drop them off. And, you know, we've always had paper recycling boxes out there, but I don't know that anybody actually knew where it was going or if it was getting recycled. And we do provide that service. So I contacted the Council Bluffs Recycling Center, Tony, just to make sure that he would be okay with us placing a trailer out here to put recycling in because we don't have a place for the bins anymore, and he's he's fine with us doing that. So that's what this trailer would be for. It'd be, we'd be able to collect the plastics, the paper, and the cardboard from the courthouse campus and then take that off to be recycled.
How do you, how do you define it to the courthouse campus? Is it going to be fenced in or something?
I don't know that Jason plans on constructing a fenced in thing. It will be something that Buildings and Grounds is going to have to police, obviously, to make sure, because it's the same thing that we ask the towns where we put our recycling trailers at, right? We're more than happy to provide a recycling trailer. You're giving us a great location to put at it. But we need your staff to help police the area because we don't have the staff to do that every day. So we'll be on Building and Grounds to kind of police that area.
So you go to Fairway, Family Fair, Hy-Vee, I mean, those are.
There was furniture the other day at one of them.
I'm not crazy about it, man. Let's just totally fenced in, only used for courthouse campus. I mean, Scott's right. I've I've been by. Hate to say the store's name because it's not their fault, but in some parking lots of grocery stores where those bins are. There's not all the time, but a lot of the time there's cardboard laying on the ground. It's all wet. I mean, when the bins are full, people just leave their stuff. And I don't think that's an attractive way to present the courthouse campus to.
Hy-Vee took theirs out too.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not in favor of it at all.
I agree with what you're saying, and that's where I think the annex is being torn down right now. We've had dumpsters just kind of sitting in that alleyway. I am sure that it is Jason's intention and more than likely a city requirement that a fence structure be constructed for those dumpsters. And I mean, it would just be an expansion of that fence area.
Well, let's, yeah, let's, let's see, before we go through, did you purchase it already?
I have not purchased it. Like I said, it's in the budget to purchase. I would like approval to purchase it because it takes a few weeks to get down here. We can utilize another trailer for the recycling.
Let's find out where am I going to put this thing and stuff. And because we, the city pulls all those ones, my understanding, the city pulls all those ones that are at those locations I was speaking about.
Correct.
This one, we're going to have to take down to the recycling center. I take it rather than out to our recycling centers.
Right, on the same day that we do the crescent, the crescent trailer that we have up there, the, this trailer would get moved as well.
Okay, well, let's just, I don't know.
I think it's a good idea. I agree with them, guys. It does need to be enclosed.
Man, doesn't the sheriff's office have a recycling trailer out there that they use? I don't know.
For the jail? Recycle jail?
We have two, like cardboard dumpsters, but we don't have a trailer.
Just cardboard, not plastic or?
Well, they're around back, are they?
Yeah, nobody, all the cameras around there, nobody wants to.
Well, I'm a firm believer that any public building that is built should have it in zoning to require recycling when possible of all recycled materials. And I just think it's, I mean, I I see the trailers out in the communities, and those parking lots are patrolled. I mean, there's, there's not debris floating around. I think we can educate our employees and.
Yeah, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about our employees. I'm worried about the the public. I mean, that's the, that's the mind. They go in and dig inside those things and stuff too. I mean, that's, I don't know if you get by out there on Valley View and Hy-Vee, but Fairway, that guy, that one's out there, it's kind of hit him in the way. They digging that one. And I mean, that's.
So if we're building a new parking lot, possibly he could fence a section off.
Well.
And make it easy.
Just like to see.
I would tend to think we have a lot of recyclables coming out of this building.
Well, I would, I imagine that the city's waiting on a fence structure because we have those two, like I said, we have the two dumpsters that's kind of sitting in the alleyway right now. We're being asked on the public health building, we have to put in a dumpster enclosure for the public health building over there. So I imagine that the city has been told that, hey, as soon as the annex building comes down, we'll put our dumpster enclosure area up of some, so I'm thinking there has to be a dumpster enclosure built somewhere, just be an expansion of that to where we could move our trailer into it.
The trailer is bigger than what we have now. The trailer is bigger than what we have now.
We don't have anything right now.
Well, when we get it, have it sitting out here. So the dumpster. Sit right over there.
Yeah, we have two dumpsters sitting out there now.
Yep.
Where does the cardboard recycling go today?
We're paying, I think it's a hundred dollars a month for a dumpster. For cardboard.
They kept inside in the basement?
It's outside. One of those dumpsters outside is for cardboard that they they brought in.
Well, let's just give some more.
What would you like me to bring back to you?
Well, kind of where they're thinking about putting it and.
Just have Jason come with me and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Show you the design for it all.
You know, I don't see it. Like I said, maybe there'll be courthouse people that bring stuff from home and use it, but I don't see it being courthouse people being the problem, to be honest with you. Yet if if you haven't seen it, you're not looking because it. The mess around those things. Oh, no, shit. The glass, they break glass. I mean, I mean, it's.
I I've seen trash dumped off at Salvation Army bins and Goodwill bins. I mean, people's trash.
You know.
I like it at all.
I live in the country, and we do use our one in crescent a lot. And I do think our community takes the extra time not to throw garbage, so to say. Up at Super Saver, again, the other day, there was a complete. Anybody needed a bedroom set or a living room set? There it was. I just thought, wow.
We used to dump in road ditches, south of the house.
We still do. I suppose.
No action today.
I'd say no action today.
All right.
Hit with Jason and figure this out. Matt, thanks for working on that. I appreciate it. Ladies, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Hey, who's in the hot seat next?
Becky Lenihan, Parks and Finance Officer, Auditor's Office, just got an and or decision on amendment for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget and setting date for public hearing on said amendment. Morning, Becky.
Good morning. I think you have the departments that are going to need to amend in your packet and the amounts for either revenue and or either revenue and expense amounts. They do have a change for the county attorney. The revenue, excuse me, is only going to be fourteen thousand, seven thirty-one.
Fourteen thousand what?
Fourteen thousand, seven thirty-one.
Becky, are these crucial to have done right now, this soon in the fiscal year?
Most of these are.
Okay, okay, this.
And we'll, we'll do another one.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Has to do with like the replacement for the insurance. Insurance checks. And then the payments of replacement for vehicles, the courthouse roof is on here. So we've added other things that that need to be done as well. There's also a change on the courthouse roof. Revenue is three hundred forty-nine thousand, three seventy-one instead of the four forty-nine. Yes, Mr. Woodland.
When you, what's the expense amount, a hundred thousand dollars for the sheriff for?
That was budgeted last fiscal year for their maintenance building that they didn't use in last fiscal year's budget, so we're going to move it to this fiscal year.
It's going to be out of their special.
That's out of the special law enforcement fund?
Yeah, that's zero, zero eighteen.
What? What's the five hundred and ten for conservation for?
The retirement payout and other projects. It's the only thing that I had on my list.
And the majority of that, like three, four hundred thousand of that comes out of the lot fund and the conservation funds. Plus, right, about a hundred thousand of that is actually in the general fund.
So it's coming out of the local option sales tax, and what what is coming out of the general fund for that?
Retirement payout.
Right, retirement, right?
Yep, and then. Vehicles instruction, marketing, or not the lot funds.
Is forty thousand we approved today for McClure? Is that it? Is that what's in here with this eighty thousand?
No.
So what, what were we given? Advanced Southwest Iowa McClure?
So that is the funnel of funds that come from Iowa's foundation through us to to them.
What's the attorney need more money for?
He, his car got totaled out in the storm.
Sweet.
Say that again.
New car, got totaled out in the storm.
What about IT? What do they need twenty thousand for?
That is for virtual servers came over cost of what he was anticipating.
Did he turn back money last year?
Ah, I believe he did. A decent amount, I remember. More than twenty thousand.
More than twenty. Kind of a little bit. I'm not sure where Brian is, but what was his comment, I believe I'm with him. Some of these things, I don't even know why we're doing it yet. But non-departmental, what's that for, Becky?
That is for spending of the remaining bond proceeds that we didn't budget for for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Get rid of those bonds.
Will those be done at this time? They've been a long carry, hasn't it, Becky?
Then I didn't, I didn't look yet this morning. Becky, is WIC? Is WIC in the, in the black or in the red?
Still on the red. Their fiscal year does not end until October.
I'll make a motion to approve setting time for the public hearing. Or you want next?
September twenty-fourth.
September twenty-fourth at ten o'clock.
Motion by Bell, a second by Shay to approve the setting for the public hearing on an amendment for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget for September twenty-fourth. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks for working on that, Becky.
All right, Becky Lenihan, Tax and Finance Officer, Auditor's Office, discussion and or decision to approve publication of county's annual financial report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Slow move. Did you review that, Susan?
I have not.
Department of Management form that I have to fill out each year.
Pardon me?
It's the Department of Management form that has to be filled out each year.
I like this band going, but sometimes it's hard to hear up there, it's, it's constant. Yeah. Wish we had a low, so.
Yeah, you're just sitting in this trap.
Keeps you sleeping better.
Okay, motion by Belt, second by Shay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Yeah.
Becky Lenihan, Tax and Finance Officer, Auditor's Office, discussion and or decision to approve disallow the following applications made to the assessor's office, two homestead applications.
There are two approvals that the assessor's office did not get, um, on the parcels before the cutoff for the tax billing period. So we will go ahead and correct those if you approve them and send these people new tax statements.
So they were missed?
They were missed by the assessor's office, yes.
There any reimbursements with these?
Just give him your tax statement, correct it, tax statement. Slow move, sorry.
They filed it twenty twenty-three, right?
So it's stamped. Proceeding twenty twenty-three, that's what it says.
You're collecting for the twenty twenty-three taxes right now.
Right.
So this credit will go on to their taxes and they will get a new statement will be sent out by the treasurer's office.
All right, motion by Shay, second by Jorgensen, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Next, we have LeVos Treasure, discussion and or decision to approve payment of taxes for the county-owned properties and drainage.
He's right. You do that about every year, don't we?
Mm-hmm, yeah, gotta pay them every year.
We have a motion by Wickman, second by Jorgensen.
Pay it, pay it, uh, with taxpayers' money, they tax ourselves.
Some of those come in at secondary level.
They got a whole list. No shit, no, they're numbers, a big.
Conservation and rodents, I think.
What?
Conservation and rodents.
Right, they're a big one, they're big numbers.
Motion by Wickman, second by Jorgensen, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, then we've got a tax abatement.
Slow move.
Five twenty-two pearl, that's our new parking lot.
That's on that for just the board's permission, it'll be the intent to merge that, to combine that parcel with our current parcel. So, if the tax, tax need to be debated, but we'll keep that, so, and we collected, and we collected for those taxes at the closing.
You're, you're gonna get that handled?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for doing that, Nick. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Next, Jana Limerick, Director Human Resources and Trish Bernard's Jail Administrator for the jail discussion and or decision on new job description and pay for the position of Senior Jail Administrator Assistant.
Good morning.
Morning.
Gosh, morning.
How you been?
Good.
You gotta sit through all the mundane stuff we have to do.
What we're looking at here, we're not creating a new position, we're changing a current one. So it's today is the Office Coordinator Assistant, and we'd like to update the job description, change the title and really match it to what this individual is currently doing. So again, we're not, we're not creating a new FTE that we're gonna hire for, okay?
Where's the old?
Um, I sent it to you Thursday or Friday? And you don't, right, you don't have this in legislative format because they are different. So it would have looked all red if I would have sent it to you, so I did send you the original, or the current one.
What, what, what? Requirements in this job description are new?
It's moving it from the sheriff's office to the jail.
In that budget line, that happened July first of this year, that's correct. And so we added a lot of information in there, so for example, um, if you're on.
Old summary of the position.
The old summary says, responsible for the performance of bookkeeping, record keeping and other administrative related functions to ensure the accurate preparation of the sheriff's office payroll and maintenance of personnel records. And so what we're clarifying here is that this is for the jail, this isn't for the entire sheriff's office. This is for the jail, which they have the most number of employees out of all the different sheriff's divisions. Uh, twenty-four, seven operations, there's a lot of trade times, holiday days, and there's a lot to keep track of when it comes to those, those schedules. And so this position, um, has a lot to do with some of the things that we add, added. Represent the jail for payroll, timekeeping, personnel records and requests to the county auditor, human resources and other agencies interacting with the jail and with the federal partners who incarcerate inmates under contract, submits necessary documents to payroll and human resources.
So this position has just grown over the years, and, I know we talked about it before. Wasn't all in there.
Correct.
Now it is.
Yep, right, yep, and these duties, this employee has been doing these duties for years. So it really is just time to update the job description. So this employee is the, the front line for the scheduling, the scheduling system, and then making sure that that data flows over to payroll and then employees get paid appropriately.
And schedule, what?
Oh, their day, yeah, scheduling employees for the day. Who's gonna work six A to six P, who's gonna work six P to six A, oh, so-and-so called in sick, I need to make sure. This person is doing that right now, this is being done today.
Has had been, has been doing it.
Yeah, has been doing it, long time.
All we're doing is updating a job description, that's it.
We are requesting to change the level as well, yeah.
Currently a what grade?
Is currently a grade five sixteen, we would like it to move to a five twenty-one.
What's the, what's the current rate in, of this person right now?
Base pay, thirty dollars and eighty-one cents.
What's it going to?
We would like it to go to thirty-three seventy-five.
Yeah, within your budget?
Yes, yes. We've been working on doing this for about two years, I, I know it was on the, on the front line when I first came on.
You, sure. Where are we getting the timekeeping system at the jail to match what everybody else is doing, are we there?
And I think it's vice versa, it's everybody else to match the jail, no, we are not there. Last I heard, it was a February timeframe, and this employee has been instrumental in helping um, those other departments to learn how she uses it, I mean, she really is a subject matter expert at Kronos and helping, um, everyone to, to start to come on board, no, that's not finished yet.
Slow move.
Yeah. We rounded, Tyler has the.
Yes, I did, yes.
I don't have any more coming, uh, from the jail, I, I know that Melvin has been working on a position. Oh, no, no, nothing more.
Motion by Wickman and a second by Shay to print the job description and pay for the position of Senior Jail Administrator Assistant to thirty-three point seventy-five per hour.
Grade, what was it?
Five twenty-one, step nine.
All right, aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you very much, I know Raquel is going to be grateful.
For all you do, courthouse there.
We, yeah, we hit three hundred a couple weeks ago.
Is it still pretty full?
Yeah, we're seeing a lot more of those mental health cases.
Yes.
Coming in unfortunate.
Our hospital can't come quick enough.
I know, yeah, and that's just gonna touch the temperature.
How about the bedside, I've seen a bunch of them, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You see on the news the other day, they busted a bunch of fentanyl over in Omaha, that guy that got shot, wasn't he?
Unfortunately, he used to be one of my prior clients in my previous life. Yeah, it is.
It, it is, there's so much more in life than that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jaylen.
I'd rather see you downstairs. Change?
Sometimes. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Went to, uh, Rhodes Operations Center, we had a meeting at Line kiln road. Uh, we all went to the groundbreaking down at the new mental health hospital. Um, let's see, again, the bike trails, went to that. Then I was involved, uh, Wednesday with Hitchcock and the ski hills, then in here in the courthouse. And then, got on my motorcycle and left.
Yeah.
Uh, nothing, uh, nothing along those lines, but, uh, being out at ISAC, I could mention that real quick, uh, very, uh, very informative out there, you know, they're, they're doing away with the compensation boards, uh, counties. Uh, and so we got a, we got an upfront, uh, uh, look at what individual counties are doing. Some of them are, are, uh, setting up their own compensation boards, some of them are not. Uh, that's, it's interesting how this thing is going, I think we need to have a discussion about that, so.
That was my note from ISAC as well, that we need a study session to talk about the compensation board and bring in the current members or the elected officials to get their take on it, so.
I think that's a good idea, Susan, just, let's hear, and we can make a better informed decision.
Yeah, figure out processes. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
MAPPA. Interviewed the EMA or E, uh, medical examiner, and, uh, seems like, uh, seems like there might have been a promised partner deal in there that'd be, uh, in, I guess, two weeks, so. We're getting, uh, we're getting an award for, um, MAPPA for the, you know, so that coming to, you know, be down at, uh, Holiday, Holiday and, uh, Suites down at Amerisgard.
When is it, Scott, do you remember?
I know, it's, it'll be coming to you soon.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I, ISAC was eye-opening, um, when you talk about budget and fiscal constraints that the counties are forced with, and you've got one county supervisor who is publicly confessing that he might be the first county supervisor to run his county into bankruptcy. Um, and then he's in tears, and it's just very moving, and it realized, I don't know. We're, we're fortunate to be in Paduaomi County.
I agree, that guy had a lot of passion about his town, and what was happening with businesses leaving and people aging out. And he says, we have no more money, and people are demanding more from him, and he got choked up.
Yeah, I can't remember.
I can't either, I sat by him and talked with him a little bit.
It was, it was, it was, he was passionate.
He, he had some passion, didn't he, John?
And then one of the sessions, they also challenged us to start our budget with zero, instead of working off of what our budget was last year and sending it out, starting at zero and seeing how much is actually necessary and not just left carryover from year to year, so, I already had the discussion with Mitch, we'll see where it goes. All right, I think we need to move on to public comments, you've been here.
Oh, God, I said, thanks for everyone, for, and the employees that did the hoodoo parade yesterday, that was great, very great.
That was a fun time, really, a lot of people there.
Showed up and attended that.
Thanks for, uh, putting that on.
Yeah, our committee.
I know it took a little bit of work.
Did you get the, uh, Craig said before he left you were gonna hand out the coloring books, is that?
I'm still working on those.
Okay, done, you didn't hand out coloring books, huh?
No, there's lots of mods and lots of candy.
Lots and lots of what?
Candy.
And you ought to see kids, you go by and you throw this candy out, and they don't like it, they'll just leave it lay on the street.
Since you, the gutters are full of ticks.
Everyone was telling me this morning.
Oh, okay, I thought you had signed up earlier.
Did you sign up for public comment?
I didn't, but I do have one.
Oh, sign up, real quick.
Get over there and sign up, and then we'll put it in the, uh, record.
Melvin, you wanna grab the podium and?
Oh, sure.
Okay, now begins our public comment portion of the agenda. In an effort to protect the privacy of individuals and reduce the potential broadcasting of defamatory and or confidential information, our live broadcast will now end, information regarding public comments and.